Good morning. Let us pray. Eternal Lord, ruler of all, graciously regard those who have been set in positions of authority among us, including Kevin, Jeff, Mike, Jeffrey, and Stephen. Have them to be guided by your Spirit that they may be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution, and unwavering in duty, that under them our Pinell County may be governed quietly and peaceably through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God now and forever. Amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with no merit, and just for all.
I'll call the meeting to order. And first up, we have a call to the public. And if I don't have a card here, if anybody wants to speak afterwards, just approach the podium and tell us your name and approximate address. First off, I have Michelle Beck.
Good morning, gentlemen. Can you hear me? This is my first time speaking at a public meeting like this, so I would appreciate if some kindness, at least with my first speaking, to you gentlemen. This morning, I have a concern that I feel like there needs to be more back and forth work as opposed to what I think my neighbors have been doing previously, which is just kind of complaining about a possible zoning change in our neighborhood. So I live off of Warren and Pop ago are probably the nearest cross streets. And there's a developer that, as we understand, wants to put a 540-home manufactured home park in our neighborhood. And I understand that there's been some back and forth with my neighbors previously about this. And really, I'm here more as a fact-finding mission for myself. I'm just trying to ensure that we have the right people that we should be talking to as far as who is our supervisor for that district and who our points of contact are, because it seems like there's been some back and forth. So could I just confirm? I've been told that it's Supervisor Kavanaugh that would be our representative. Is that true? Am I right in that? Okay. And again, pardon me for not knowing all the rules and the steps for this, but is it a possibility that those of us that live in that neighborhood have the opportunity to meet with you, Mr. Kavanaugh, about this issue?
The chairman will address your question through the.
Okay. My apologies.
Since this is called to the public, it does not allow a back and forth with the, you know, commenter, so you can direct staff to follow up.
After all the speakers have done, then we'll direct.
Absolutely. So that was just my concern this morning, is I'm just trying to figure out who the right avenues are to go through, what processes need to be, I guess, followed to the letter so that we can successfully express whether we are for or against this project. And really, that's all I had this morning, is I just wanted to make sure that my presence was noted here and that I had the right individual to speak to and that basically we were following all of our rules. So that's all I had for you gentlemen this morning, and I do appreciate your work. So thank you.
Pat Butkus.
Good morning. I am here, I purchased a home here in Florence off of Cactus Forest in March of last year. There's a wash that runs through the property, which I was fine with. Unfortunately, the property owner behind me bulldozed his five acres in August of last year. In doing so, it is now flooding my property. And I can handle the back, I can dig it out, I can do whatever, but the front is below street level because of all the sand and dirt that has washed into the street. I understand there's the Pinell County Drainage Ordinance update that was drafted in 2017. I need to find out where that's going. It's almost six years now. And in speaking with engineers and lawyers, to go civilly is too expensive. I don't have the $10,000-plus for it. Engineers tell me that the county should provide the regulations governing building site grading, and they tell me it's current enforceable. I just hope that this draft will become enforceable so that people like myself that are impacted by properties around them that are blocking the wash are held accountable. That's all I really needed to say, is just please look into that. Thank you.
Could we get your name? It was, we have it, Pat Butkus. And the address.
Pat Butkus, 8717 North Pala Verde Road.
Okay, thank you. Cindy Compton.
Good morning, Chairman Sertie, fellow supervisors. I'm, I'd like to address why Pinell County spent $115 million-plus on property to be used by Lucid. I know a committee was involved, but how much personal money would be put up on a company whose stock price started at $60 and as of this morning is $7.54? Why are we risking millions of dollars from Pinell County on a company that expected to have $2-point-billion in losses in 2023? One of the reasons for this was for employment, and as you realize, I'm sure you realize, that Lucid laid off 1,300 people this year. One more issue, I would like to know the possibility of exploring a limited number of precincts having paper ballots and a hand count. Two states have had counties that have had successful hand-count paper ballots. Arizona has no statute requiring, stating that we cannot have those. I thank you for your time. Oh, excuse me, I'm Cindy Compton, 1247 North Hossi End Road, Casa Grande. Thanks.
Mary Rodriguez.
Mary Rodriguez, Casa Grande, Arizona. Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Sertie and everyone. I'm getting a little more comfortable with this podium thing. Boy, it's intimidating. But today, I just wanted to give an update. I've been paying attention to this election thing, and as a concerned citizen, after watching 2020, 2022, the primary and the general, I figured as a citizen, it is my responsibility to start paying attention, so I started paying attention. This morning, I just wanted to point all of you to the Senate election, the Senate and House, actually, election committee meetings that were held January and February of this year. I have a website here for all of you to see, and I know I have to point it to the camera because no one else can see it, so I'm pointing it to the camera. All I saw last time I spoke here was my crooked part in my hair. So I know that this can be seen by everyone, but these hearings show potential problems for Pinell County in our elections. I commend our recorder, Dana Lewis, for holding a work group right now where they're addressing some of these issues and looking into areas of concern, but without looking at this evidence that was provided at these hearings, it's very important that each one of you see these. There's a bunch of them. We are looking at a lawsuit with Kari Lake where signature verification up there showed thousands of ballots that were kicked out, the affidavits were kicked out on the envelopes. These are potential problems for our county, and we need to be on top of it because we are growing, and the problems will magnify as they come here and the population grows in Pinell County. So I am concerned, I want to see concern from all of you. I sat down with Supervisor Miller, I met with the county attorney at the Casa Grande soiree at the rec center and mentioned my concerns about all of this. And it's one thing to talk about these hearings, it's another thing to see them because so much was presented. So I encourage everyone to go and watch the Senate and the House, especially the January 23rd one, where Shelby Bush presents the signature verification items that they found. Thank you for the time today.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Roberto Rivalis, resident of Gold Canyon. Good morning. My topic for concern this morning is fiduciary responsibility and real problems in our county. At a time when our country is facing a debt ceiling economic challenge, here in Pinell County, we're witnessing a breakdown of accountability by officeholders mismanaging public tax resources. Recent events reveal failure in fiduciary responsibility whereby any public school here in this locality in our county seat failed in its management of school resources, rewarding a political party, the Republican Party, with reduced fees for use of a school facility for partisan activity, occurring not just in one year but during the course of eight years. Fiduciary responsibility must be taken seriously. Again, I ask this board, I repeat, please exercise for your own protection and protection of taxpayers your fiduciary responsibility. Let us not be diverted by focusing on what I just mentioned with the school resource, but the big question is, why hasn't the Board of Supervisors responded to repeated requests for an audit of our county's largest user of our taxpayers' funds, the sheriff's office, which is engaged in multiple activities that are a potential breeding ground for possible commingling of private and public funds, partisan and nonpartisan money, and activities? For the board's own protection, it's long overdue for the board to exercise your fiduciary responsibility, authorize an audit, or run the risk of others to investigate and disclose failures to exercise your fiduciary responsibility over the sheriff's office. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Okay. So, Mr. Kavanaugh, I saw the county attorney talk to that person, but you were mentioned. Do you want to get them your info somehow, or?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the county attorney has provided the information to the citizen.
And then with Ms. Butkus, I was going to have, if Joe in the back is from Public Works, if you could get any info to her, I don't know where, if she sat or left or, anyway, okay, all right. We'll then move on to presentation and project briefing from Kevin Kugler of Michael Baker International and Hannah Quincy of MAG.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I would like to take this moment to introduce Hannah Quincy. She's, she works with Maricopa Association of Governments, she's the project manager for this study. She also has her consultant, Kevin Kugler, with Michael Baker. They are here today to give us a briefing on the Superstition Vista multimodal transportation plan. And then with that, I would hand it over then, Hannah.
Good morning, Chairman Sertie and fellow chairman, excuse me, fellow supervisors. It's my pleasure today to provide you an introduction to this study, the Superstition Vista's multimodal transportation planning study, going to introduce to you goals and objectives and the process that we're going through over the course of this study, and today really offering you the opportunity to provide input on the study and express any issues, concerns, objectives, or any other type of input that you wish to offer us to consider throughout the duration of this study. So just touching on the agenda for this quick presentation, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the study objectives and give you an overview, going to give you an overview of the technical advisory group and how that's comprised. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our stakeholder involvement, including our focus groups, these elected official briefings and what we have planned for the future in the study, and then open it up for your comments and discussion and input. So the objective of the Superstition Vista's multimodal transportation study is to develop a coordinated vision for a multimodal transportation network across jurisdictions that enhances mobility and accessibility for people and goods to and within this study area for the near term, which we're looking at that horizon being 2030, and long-term 2050 horizon. So this study will help the jurisdictions in and around the study area gain a better understanding of transportation needs that currently exist as well as in the future, as well as challenges, and to provide an initial vision for a transportation framework, a network really, that supports projected growth. This includes rail, roadway, freight, bike, pedestrian transit, all the needs that are involved within transportation. The transportation network and service alternatives and recommendations that this study comes up with will be built upon existing needs and anticipated growth and development, planned roadway extensions, really bringing together all the different planning efforts that are currently occurring within Pinell County, existing and planned energy and water infrastructure systems, which is very important to understand, land use plans, travel demand modeling, and a shared vision amongst stakeholders. So I'll give you a visual here of our study area. It's a very, very large study area. We're looking at approximately 287 square miles in northern Pinell County, located in the southeastern portion of our region. The study area boundaries include Hawes Road alignment, which traverses through the city of Mesa and the town of Queen Creek, traveling south. It also is adjacent on Arizona Farm Road to the Gila River Indian Community. And then the study area boundary travels along State Route 79 and the US 60 on the eastern side, and then upwards towards Southern Avenue and the cities of Apache Junction and the city of Mesa on the northern edge. So we are seeing a lot of different jurisdictions represented within this study area, notably Pinell County, and also notably Arizona State Land Department with a lot of undeveloped state land within the study area. So I'll touch on our study process. This is approximately an 18-month study. We're well underway, we've been having lots of conversations with stakeholders already. We have about another year left on the study. This study will be comprised of six main tasks, task one being project management. Task two is a very comprehensive public and stakeholder outreach process that will span the entire study. That includes these elected official briefings, we're going to come back to you again later in the study for your input on the recommendations, as well as stakeholder focus groups, community open houses to gather lots and lots of input from the community. Task three, data collection, and we'll analyze existing and forecasted conditions. Task four, we will develop vision and goals for the study as well as the multimodal transportation system alternatives. Task five, we will develop the transportation system recommendations for those horizon years, as well as an implementation and funding plan. Task six, we'll be preparing that final report and executive summary. So we've established a technical advisory group for the project consisting of senior staff from each, each of the government agencies represented within our study area to oversee the project team's efforts throughout the course of the study. And thank you for Dedrick's involvement representing Pinell County on the process. Tag membership also includes Arizona Department of Transportation, Arizona State Land Department, City of Apache Junction, Town of Florence, the Gila River Indian Community, City of Mesa, and Town of Queen Creek. Our tag members, and we thank them very much, they offer the study feedback and guidance from each agency's perspective and importantly, help us build consensus on our study recommendations. Now, I mentioned stakeholder focus groups and stakeholder involvement. We are seeing considerable growth in Pinell County, placing economic pressures and a lot of traffic congestion in and around various parts of the study area. So I wanted to highlight that stakeholder coordination is a really important part of this study so that we can create a shared vision for this future multimodal transportation network. So along with our tag agency coordination, we're engaging stakeholders to integrate existing infrastructure systems and plan development, as well as just a basic understanding of all the different needs and interests within the study area that affect transportation into the study, for what's existing now and for what's planned in the future. So some of the stakeholder interests that we are engaging, we're looking at flood and water protection, energy and infrastructure, rail and freight providers, public transportation providers, bike users and trails as well. So we will engage our stakeholders at various milestones throughout the project. First, we've been conducting one-on-one stakeholder interviews. We're going to come back to these stakeholders at a couple more points throughout the study to have focus groups so that stakeholders can really talk amongst themselves and coordinate their various needs and interests. That will influence, you know, the draft alternatives and final recommendations.
Would it throw you off if we asked questions now? How many, how many slides do you have after this?
One more and then.
Okay, that's good, because if we want to go back to some of these, I hate to go back 20 slides, but if you're only going back a couple, that'll work. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. So I just wanted to reiterate on the elected official briefings. We're coming to you today to give you this overview of the study and what we're planning to do. We're going to come back to you again later in the study, probably late 2023 or early 2024, to go over those draft plan recommendations and get your input before the plan is finalized. So with that, I will open it up to questions and discussion. We'd love to hear your input thoughts as we really get speed going on this study. We'd love to hear from you on the front end.
Okay, so I imagine Mr. Goodman, since he is the MAG rep, will have some questions. And we appreciate MAG doing this because even though we're Pinell County, we do have a great dependence on MAG. And this is basically in my district, District Five, so I have some questions. If you could go back to the map, the first map that you had of the study area, right there, so you'll notice everything is south of the 60, but I just want to point out and let the people doing the study know that everything to the north of there is greatly affected by this as well, because we've got basically a million people a year come to recreate in the, in the mountains up 88 and in all the mountains. So yes, the planning is for down there, but you've got to keep that in mind, that people are coming through here and they're going to try to get into trailheads and hike and get up to the lakes, et cetera. So that needs to be on the back of everybody's minds, and going to the north out of all of this, we need more opportunities for better parking lots, getting trailheads out of, out of residential areas to where they belong. So I just wanted to point that out. And when you point to the stakeholders, that it would be those people as well instead of just the bikers and the users of here down below, so.
Thank you, Chairman, and that's excellent feedback. We will be doing travel demand modeling, looking at existing and projected future conditions too for travel in and out and around the study area. So we'll certainly take those travel patterns into consideration, that we'll really consider what those existing patterns are and future, considering all the development and growth that's happening throughout the study area.
Mr. Goodman, surely you want to weigh in?
I do now.
Just, just as a, just as a reminder, in upcoming meetings, we're going to be moving some to Thursday to accommodate MAG so that Mr. Goodman can attend the meetings. That's how important this is. So meetings have always been on Wednesday, but we are going to start having some Thursday mornings, meetings because of this.
And I appreciate that, that's probably pretty vital, that we weigh in on so much, especially since we depend on MAG for a lot of our planning when it comes to our infrastructure. This has been a long time coming, I know, and this is something that I think the group as a whole on the East Valley side have really been pushing for this particular study to take place. Again, it's, we're behind the eight ball in so many of our projects and things of that nature, but nonetheless, we're where we are today moving forward. It's good to know that you're already six months into it, which is great, and you're looking at about 2024, the summer of 2024, right? When you're going to reveal everything?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And you're in good hands with Diedrick, he's going to be, he's a good lead for us, and I have a lot of confidence in you and what you're doing, so I appreciate that. We've already started to pull some of the key groups within Pinell County, City of Queen Creek, Florence, and the Apache Junction along with us at Pinell County to kind of figure out some of our coalition in order to make our presence a little bit stronger within MAG. That's something that we've been, and City of Maricopa, by the way, they're a big part of that coalition of what we're doing because they're also included in, not necessarily this study, but what we're doing, so. And again, thank you, Chairman, for moving things around so that we can have more of a presence. With these meetings that you're going to have with the elected officials, will it be individually, or are they going to be collectively like at a board meeting or something like that?
Supervisor Goodman, we are planning two rounds of elected official briefings. We're, we're doing the first round right now, which is coming to board supervisor meeting, to city councils, town councils, presenting the project, giving this overview, and then we'll be coming back later when we have the draft plan recommendations and sharing within, sort of the same format, coming to, you know, your meeting, coming to council meetings and sharing those recommendations at the draft phase to get input before we finalize. If there's interest in having any individual conversation, we can certainly accommodate. We're having individual one-on-one stakeholder interviews, and then we'll have those focus groups with interview, with the stakeholders as well. We're having community open house virtual meetings planned at three points throughout the study, the first one being on June 1st. So lots of opportunities for input within the study, but if you have a specific need for, you know, discussion on a specific topic pertaining to the study, we're happy to accommodate.
Okay. And for me personally, I'd like that, and I would assume that your study, I think, takes in three, maybe four of our districts that are within your entire study here. So I personally would like that, kind of an involvement from you guys, getting some personal information from, you know, as being in, being in this position for over six years. personal information from, you know, as being in this position for over six years now, I think there might be some things I might be able to lend a little bit. I'm hoping, anyway.
Supervisor Goodman, we really appreciate your input, and we'd be happy, as a study team, to follow up with you.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, we're at the beginning of this, and so I'm looking forward to a lot of the things that's going to be revealed. I heard somebody made a comment, I think it was Diedrich, that said something about when you guys actually started to look at this, and where the north-south alignment was finally settled in on, there was some discussion, wait a minute, the majority of the traffic is further to the west of there, why did you go so far out? And so it's good to know that this will help bring some of that to light, and even reveal a bit more about what is needed in our region. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? County manager, do you even want to weigh in? Pretty vital project.
Thank you, Chairman, and yes, we are pleased to partner with MAG on this. As we're developing our regional plans for transportation, we want to partner with you, so we make sure our loops are connected, and we make sure that our communities are connected in a coordinated fashion. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been a while since we've had an election update, and we have Geraldine Rowan, Dana Lewis here to address that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, Jerry Rowan with the Elections Department, and...
Dana Lewis, Pinal County Recorder.
So we thought we would give you some updates on what's going on in our respective departments. We have added, I think I had seven staff, we've added three more staff, I'm currently at 10. And those new staff are currently undergoing a curriculum of training within my department to become intimately familiar with the tabulating process, with the ballot processing and receiving procedures, as well as our candidate filings, campaign filings, and the cities, towns, and districts that we manage elections for. The curriculum that we have scheduled is that each of them will go through a three-to-four week period in each one of those sections, before they move on to another section, so they will all be cross-trained. One of the things that I'm anticipating doing with that additional staff is having staff be the operator on the tabulators when we go into the election cycle. So we will not be using volunteers who have not had extensive training for that process. We are building a procedure manual, I think we are on our third iteration of it at this point. We have not finalized all of them yet. We are in need of some additional training. Yesterday, ESNS presented its, I believe it's the DS 6.3.0.0 version, which will bring our electionware software up to Microsoft 10 platform, and it will update, we have one DS 200, which is a precinct tabulator that we do not use, but we have. That upgrade is going to cost approximately $12,000. They were certified by, or recommended for certification by the Technical Committee, who recommended certification to Adrian Fontes, the Secretary of State. So we expect that it's going to be certified, will be available. We did not want to undertake training with ESNS on our current platform, because there are some changes. So we thought we would, we expected certification to come rather quickly, it did, and we thought that we would be able to have a more comprehensive training program, we wouldn't have to hit that twice. So it's training from our vendors, the, as we talked about last week, I believe, the Secretary of State is having the Certified Election Official Training, which will begin on, for us, it will be June 12th through the 14th. That program is put on every odd-numbered year by the Secretary of State, and must be completed before the next general election. Pretty much all of my staff will be attending that training, and all of them will become certified as election officials. That training touches on all of the topics that you might find covered in the EPM. So it is, it will educate them about the legal requirements for setting up a polling place, what has to be in a polling place, dealing with voters, how to handle ballots, how to tabulate ballots, how to keep audit logs, and how to accurately and successfully manage an election. It's very comprehensive. It's a little bit shorter than it used to be, because I don't think they're concentrating as much on the legal topics that they have in the past. The other thing that's happening that's very exciting for us is the new building. We've been able to see some renderings of it. For me, after working in Coolidge, in our current facility, the workflow is so vastly improved. So our goal is, and we will be able to keep, all ballots will stay under one roof, they're not going to even be moving across the breezeway that we have between our current buildings. The workflow is seamless. So it will come into, early ballots will come into the recorder's office, early voting. They stay within the building, they're transferred to the early ballot receiving board, and that board is right next to the early ballot processing board. They're not sitting out in my lobby or in a warehouse, they are all in controlled, camered up spaces. So you should be able to see the entire flow. And from the ballot processing area, they come out of that door and go right into the tabulating room. And from the tabulating room, they go right across the hall into the vault. It's really, it's so exciting. So I don't know if I have anything else. Do you have any questions?
When you said you're going to phase out volunteers, what all does that encompass, and what all will be handled by staff?
So Chairman Sertie, one of the issues that we have with HR and with FSLA was the way we had structured payment for the early ballot processing board. They were paid on a piecemeal basis, which made it look like they were employees, and that we should have been providing some other types of benefits or accommodations for. So the goal is to have, for those folks who man the early ballot processing board and the early ballot receiving board, that they be election cycle temps. So if you have an interest in serving in the Elections Department for five or six weeks during an election cycle, it still certainly is open for you, and we're more than happy to have you. But you will have some training, which we didn't do that much of, at least that I'm aware of, and you will be an employee. You will fill out an application with Pinal County, and there will be a modified background check. The staff that I will be using will be the ones who will actually operate. They're going to load the ballots, they're going to press the buttons, they're going to be the ones to understand what that screen is telling them, if there's an error, which ballots should be counted, shouldn't be counted, need to be recounted. Does that answer your question?
I think so, yes. And we want to stay open, obviously, from call to the public. I mean, this is still something that's on everybody's mind in the whole state. So we want to continue to be open and just get everything out there, and, yes.
Chairman Sertie, I absolutely agree, and once again, and I stand by this, anybody from the public is welcome to contact Elections at any time and come in and look at it, talk to us, see if they are interested in being a part of the whole process.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. You said that there won't be volunteers, or you don't anticipate having volunteers. So, but you're having people who would ordinarily be volunteers be categorized as employees for a temporary period of time, is that what I understood?
Correct.
Okay. And so, it's my understanding, last go-around, there are times when there were not, say, enough Republican observers in the room, or so on and so forth. Have you addressed that, to put a stop order in place if we don't have enough workers or observers in the room, or any policies in that regard to say we're going to have the right amount of observers in the room?
Observers are not something that I can control. Observers are provided by the party chairs. So they either have them, or they don't have them. I mean, my obligation is to make sure that every team that's working on a ballot, no matter which process or phase that it is, is that it's handled by a bipartisan team. And we always had that. But in terms of the observers who are observing the activity, it's up to them, if they really, if they want to spend that time there, or if they want to volunteer and sign up for it.
Okay. And then the paid volunteers, I guess we'll call them now, are those representative of the parties? Is there an even number of Democrats, Republicans, Independents, or anything like that, or no?
I think there might be probably an issue, likely. We would have to craft the election cycle temp employment, or the job description, and to be able to point to the importance of having bipartisan teams, so that we could ask you, are you a Republican or a Democrat? And so if I've got five Republicans that I've already hired, and I only have three Democrats, I'm going to say to that sixth Republican, I can't hire you, I have too many. That does create, I think, some HR issues. But what we have found is that, you know, we usually have, we didn't have a problem with having enough Independents, Democrats, and Republicans to staff our boards.
Okay. And then you mentioned the audit logs, and it ended up being a problem in the general election. So how will the process for audit logs and the training for audit logs change in the upcoming cycle as compared to the last cycle?
So, the processing board, or the receiving board, will begin the audit log. They will log in all of the batches that are received from early voting. Those all have a batch number on them. They have a number of ballots that were included in there. They will verify whatever, what early voting says they sent to us, we actually got. They will then go to the processing board. The processing board will log in any ballots that they reject out of any batch. We're going to duplicate simultaneously for early voting. They will log in how many duplicates they had to do out of the batch. They will also, and so rejected tend to be things like, it's an empty affidavit envelope, it's got the wrong ballot in the envelope, it's the wrong ballot style for the affidavit envelope. They will come up with a number, after they subtract out ballots that they have rejected, because the duplicated ballots are going to be done simultaneously, so they will be included in that batch. They will have a number of ballots that they have sent to tabulation.
Okay.
Tabulation has another log that says, hey, I'm starting on the machine, I have a batch of 48 ballots here. I start on my machine, it's at zero. I'm going to run these ballots. And you either get 48 that run through, and if you don't, you stop. There may be something that the processing board didn't think needed to be duplicated, but maybe the machine felt it needed to be duplicated, said, I can't quite read that mark, because the processing board is not looking at each oval to make sure that it's properly filled in, right? They're just making sure that it's the ballot, they've got it. So if a ballot is not read by the machine, it's out stacked, it's looked at for possible adjudication, and adjudication if necessary, that's logged in, that number. And they come up with a total number, which is going to equal whatever was read by the machine and tabulated, plus any that were held out for duplication, although I would like to try duplicating also simultaneously in the tabulation room. So it's going to be a slower counting process. When you get to the end of each batch, you will know where each and every ballot went to and what you did with it.
And last time, you said that you thought the canvas was done prematurely, and you said, I think we had enough, I think of an issue to raise some questions. So how, in this next process, be it the physical location, the new procedures, the new workflow, how are you going to prevent that situation from occurring again?
I have no plans on bringing you a canvas that I'm not 100% confident in. And so, so, excuse me. We have spent considerable time, energy and effort on the poll pad. The poll pad is actually a good audit tool, if it is operating properly, because it will tell you how many ballots were actually handed out to voters, ballots that they voted. We've added an upgrade to the poll pads, not an upgrade, but it's a change in programming so that it will also keep a separate number that says, this is the number of provisional ballots we gave out. We simplified the official ballot report, so that it's understandable, easy to fill out, and you should be able to track the number of ballots that I sent you to the poll, tell me how many you got. If you look at your poll pad check-ins, you should be able to tell me how many you gave out, but you should also be able to still count your ballots and tell me, that number should be the same, with, along with the provisionals. You'll have the total number of check-ins and the total number of provisionals, and you'll have the total number of spoiled. Those ballot reports will be, I anticipate, in the new building, I anticipate that the audit board will likely be in the vault, right across from the tabulating room. So if the tabulating room is tabulating, and they don't come up with a number that matches that official ballot report, you stop. You delete that batch, put it back in the box, take it to the audit board, and the audit board makes, takes the steps to ensure that the number of ballots that's being reported are either there or not there, and if they're not, where are they? You're going to stop and research it, find out what's going on. We will do the PPE in the old, in the Coolidge facility. So it won't be as pretty and have that wonderful workflow that we're going to see in the new building, but we're going to take the same steps. But I have no intention of not checking absolutely every, using and checking every tool that I have before I bring you a canvas. I have just no intention of doing that.
And my final question is on Avid, but that may be something that would be for the recorder to answer.
Okay.
So, we're going to, Mr. Chairman, shall we continue with Ms. Rowan, or segue?
However, I mean, we definitely want to hear from Dana Lewis as well, because, yeah. And I think Dana, I think whenever you get questions from the public for the elections, they still automatically go through the recorder, so you're having to field the questions, and then, so, yeah, we want to hear from, as much as we can.
Chairman Sertie, members of the board, Dana Lewis, recorder. Yes, that does still occur, and I'm getting better at making sure I field those back to the Elections Department, it's kind of an old habit. I'd like to start with the fact that we have been having the voter education working groups. We had our last one this past Friday. It was a pretty great session. We had 10 members from the public did attend, had a robust question-and-answer session. I will say that we're still researching some of those questions, because they were pretty in-depth, and I plan to get those answers back to those members that attended on Friday. Another thing to bring up is that during the 55th legislative session, SB 1411 amended ARS 16550, which requires counties to report when an early ballot has been received, and then again, update the early ballot status as signature is accepted. We are working really closely with the Avid Steering Committee and the enhancement committees to ensure our current systems will accomplish this task effectively with the equipment we currently have in place. Another add-on to the Recorder's Department is we acquired a system called the Connect Write Mailer, and it allows us to more proactively update our approach to our cleaning up of our voter rolls. We're pretty excited, and we should be putting that in place in the next 60 days. And then we're in the process of purchasing additional equipment, and hopefully some vehicles to be more prepared for the presidential preference election. Yes, Jerry spoke earlier about us having the EOC training. It'll occur throughout the state in June and July and August, and then recertification will happen at the end of 2023, as per statute requires. Then we have the Election Official Conference coming up, and we are currently, as a team, working on EPM chapters eight and nine, folks.
I do have one other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention. It is looking like for the 2024, the PPE, I'm just lacking two polling sites, but for the primary and the general, I am estimating that we're going to have between 17 to 20 polling locations that we're going to have to change, because schools and some churches and some HOAs are concerned about the political climate, and they have withdrawn their agreement to participate as a polling location. So we met with the city clerks, we were invited to the Region Six meeting, I believe it was last week, and they have indicated that they, we can reach out to them, they know their city... their cities and towns, and they're happy to help us try to locate new polling locations. I want to get that nailed down as quickly as possible so that we can make that public and people aren't taken by surprise. But if you have any thoughts or ideas for us, we would be happy to hear from anybody.
Well, I didn't get my question answered about Avid. And so Avid, could you explain for the benefit of the public what Avid is? And it's my understanding that there is assistance in cleaning up the voter rolls, and you mentioned cleaning up the voter rolls, and how is that going to take place?
Chairman Surti, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board. The Avid system is the Arizona Voter Information Database. Out of the 15 counties in the state of Arizona, 13 belong to the Avid system. It is managed initially through the Secretary of State's office. We have a buy-in program that we're a part of. Maricopa County and Pima County have their own standalone systems that interface with the Avid system. The information from Department of Health Services moves from across state, it's all loaded to our dashboards in the Avid system. So we're daily updating the voter information for registrants in Penalt County.
Okay. And last, in the last election, I think you sent an email after we, the day after we canvassed saying that there was some sort of a inaccuracy. Was that having to do with Avid or the count? What was that?
It was after the canvas that during our audits with the early board or the early voting department, we realized that numbers weren't succinct like they should have been. In doing so, we reached directly out to the Secretary of State's office, who manages that program from a developmental standpoint, was able to identify that due to human error in one of the staff, that a batch had been deleted. And we were able to not only find that batch because of our amazing audit trail and chain of custody programs that we have here in the recorders office, we were able to get the voters, their voter history back where it needed to be. And what was really great about this, and I call a complete win, is the fact that we were able to identify it and fix what happened in the development of the system so that doesn't happen in Penalt County or any other county in the state.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that information.
Supervisor Goodman.
Just a couple of things. The comment or one of the things that was alluded to about volunteers that were there to monitor, to oversee, can you talk a little bit more about what the issue was or, or to Supervisor Kavanaugh's statement or comment that he made? That's, we don't, to your point, we don't have control over that if the Republican Party or the Democrat Party sends somebody to actually monitor. Is that?
That's correct. They, you know, you send out before the election, you send a communique out to the party chairs letting them know that you would like a list of their observers so that we can check them in, we know who they're supposed to be. You know, we want to control to some extent those folks, especially in our current location, the folks who are having access because we have so very limited secured space. So we want to know who's, who should we be expecting, and we need to know the numbers. We wouldn't want 20 people to show up. I can't fit 20 people into my lobby. So there is a process, and the, they either sign up, they find precinct committee man or volunteers within their own organizations. They either show up or they don't.
So, but that's the party leaders that provide that information to you?
That's correct.
So that you can get the information out to these people so that they can participate and be a part of the process, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, and that's really out of our hands to make that happen. That's really up to the party leaders to assure that they're sending the right amount of people to these, to monitor this situation. And if there is more than 20 people, we probably ought to grow a little bit more because I'm telling you what, there's so much disarray and disenfranchised, disconnect with the voters right now that there's got to be a way that we start bringing this back and we start helping them. Now, this is probably not the place to talk about this, but hand counts, you know? We've heard, we've heard discussion about that, and so I think at some future board meeting, we ought to be addressing that and looking at that as a possibility. Is it legal? Is it not legal? So on and so forth and those type of things? Please. I didn't, and I'm not saying this for applause or anything else. It's because, bottom line is, we've got to get this back to the trust of the people. And so whatever it's going to take to do that, I haven't looked at those, those videos for a lot of reasons, you know? Because sometimes I can't even tell whether or not some of the stuff that's spoken is true or not. And that's the unfortunate thing about all of this is that it's, you know, people want to say things that are not true and they get that information out there. But so for us, we've got to find a way that we help to get the truth out there and make it look, make it to where we're actually doing something about this. So I really want to see us look at the possibility for hand counts at some point. But I think the, you know, the bottom line is, when it came to, I was there that night for the, to observe because of the chaos and everything that we were experiencing. And there was not one Republican observer there that night.
Which night was that?
That was the primary election, not one. And that was disturbing to me, big time. And so that is just, you know, that's uncalled for. And so we should be stepping up to the plate, all parties, to help bring back the confidence of what we need to do. We rely on these elections. That's why I'm a big advocate for us actually spending the kind of money that we're spending to make it to where we've got some control or what control we can have over these things. And so that's all I've got to say, but I appreciate your efforts. I have some more questions that I'm going to ask, and I'm going to want some information on about some other questions that were brought up here at this, this particular meeting. I want to more, have a more robust discussion about some of the things that keep being alluded to that I would like to have some light brought to.
Are you talking in the future or today?
No, not today. But I, yeah, we'll talk about that and we'll figure that out when to bring it in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The one thing that kind of stands out to me this morning is the, did you say 17 locations are asking not to participate?
Yes.
Locations? That's pretty close to 20%. And, and in my mind, that really makes things even more difficult. What's Plan B? I mean, we already have doubled up or almost tripled up in some locations for precincts. I mean, that's not going to fix, by, by not participating is not going to help the confidence of the citizenry, is the way I, is the way I interpret it. So I don't know if there's a way that some other people or other organizations can step up to the plate and offer their facilities, but that's, that's very disturbing to me that there'd be that many people that want to bow out and not be a part of the process, is the way I interpret that.
It is, and in large part, it's in schools. School districts are reluctant to have a polling place on their, on their campus when kids are in school. So I, we're reaching out to anybody that we can, and I know Dana has even done as much, to, to find whoever we know, to lean on them, to encourage them. That's part of civics. Voting is, is an.
Exactly. Part of a civic program. And they, years ago, they used to have a scenario where the kids got to vote as well. I mean, it didn't count for anything, but it taught them the process. It kind of, it kind of, you know, is an example of how this system really works, and we should be doing that with second, third, fourth graders and to build that civic morale in the youth of our, of our society. So I don't know, but anyway, I will, if I can help, let me know.
I will.
So I want to follow up on that. So one of the schools is back online though, right? Apache Junction was out, but they're back.
That's correct, Chairman.
One of the solutions they would have came up with also is just canceling school for that day if they, which is simple. I mean, there's a lot of school days in the year, just add it at the end, so.
To that point of locations, though, we've, we've discussed having shopping centers, not to be, you know, too crazy, but like, you know, the Halloween store does rent stores, right? So we can, we can do that in certain areas.
You know, if we were, if we were in a vote center sort of environment, the pop-up in a commercial space would be great because you'd be looking at a space for at least four, four to five weeks.
And they've got parking and they've got all those.
And they do have everything. I have not looked at a commercial space. I don't, so I can't tell you how difficult it would be to, I just need to use it for one day or two days or three days. I just need your space for three days.
Well, there are areas that are like that, that are empty spaces that would be happy to rent it for a week or whatever we need to get cleaned up.
That's, that is certainly something that we are going to look at. We have to, and we've got to do it now because people need advance notice. They need to know where their polling location is.
And to that point of we need to look at it now, people say, well, what are you going to do with your elections building because you work four days a year? It's not four days a year, it's all the time.
It is.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Following up on, on Mr. Gibbons' thought on the volunteers or the observers, so they have to be pre-registered, you said, right? So you kind of know they come in, they're security, or at least you know they're coming, or no?
This is, this is a procedure that they have practiced that is that the chairs, the party chairs have made available a spreadsheet of the dates and times that these people will be showing up. If somebody shows up and says, I want to observe, I'm not going to say no.
Okay. And if there's, my question is, if there's no one there through an error or whatever, is there a procedure we can call the chairperson of the respective party and go, hey, FYI, your person isn't here, we're going to start counting in another half an hour?
We certainly can put that into place.
Yeah. There's no prohibition against that, right?
No.
If I might, Chairman Surti, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, we have a robust communications system with the party chairs. They do a pre-communication briefing with us prior to the election. We do a post-election briefing with them, and part of the pre is letting them know where we're going to be at, what our hours are going to be, the locations we can have political observers at, what statute they need to be referring to, what the expectations are. They can't have any electronic devices, they can't bring in black, blue, or number two. We go through all of these protocols with the party chairs so that they're aware of what we, what we require from those people when they are present in our, in our locations. But we do, we meet with the party chairs and then other stakeholders of the county. The other thing is with election cycle temps and utilizing other employees in the county, we are able to fill that bipartisanship. So when we're talking about, you know, early boards, but you asked if we, you know, go out and specifically recruit these people, no. Again, that communication with our party chairs is imperative to this process because when I ask, I say, I need special election board workers, or I'm going to need election cycle temps for signature verification, and I need to send them through this robust training program. I need to have that communication, that relationship with those party chairs. And luckily, we really do have that in Penalt County.
Anything else? So just to let the public know, we can't have really a forum where the public interacts. So before the next time we have you folks up, if any questions that you, that the citizens want to ask, funnel them through on supervisors, that's what we're here for, we'll get your questions, we'll get answers for you, so. And we'll see you next time you're here.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Dana, you had mentioned that you had a forum and you had a bunch of questions that was asked of the public. Could I get a copy of that, of those questions and your responses?
Absolutely. Chairman Surti, Supervisor Goodman, absolutely, we're working on that right now.
Maybe copy all of us.
Okay. Yes, absolutely. We're working through the IT stuff right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks again. Legislative update with Supervisor Miller.
We've adjourned just like the House and the Senate have. They canceled last week's meeting, and I just got an email last night and they're canceling this week's meeting. Everybody's sitting around waiting for the legislature to come back. So not, not anything really to report.
So tamales are still on hold.
Tamales are still on hold.
Okay.
You know, and really the next process will be the budget. And so some of these bills that have passed are tied to dollars and cents, and whether or not they'll get those full funding or partial funding is wait to be seen.
Okay. Thank you. County managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to let everybody know it's Heat Awareness Week here in Arizona this week. It's as fitting as the temperatures are warming up. Arizona Department of Health Services, if you go to their website, you can see tips and stats and everything. 2021, 552 people died of heat-related deaths in the state. And then last year in 2022, in Penalt County, we had, out of the 263 investigated deaths by our medical examiner's office, 32 of those were heat-related. And Penalt County Sheriff's Office, you know, during these months for search and rescue, of course, this is the number one reason why people are calling out there because of heat-related type illnesses. But just to educate the public as well, and some of the things that we do as a county related to this, we do have a video, there's a, on the Arizona Trail at Freeman Road Trailhead, which is about 20 miles if you're traveling southeast on the 79, and then you go east about another 20 miles, you'll hit this trailhead, and there's an exciting project that we do there to help people that are hiking and biking or on their horses get water. So if you could show that.
This is a little different than our normal trail maintenance or trail construction projects.
Going out and clearing trail, getting rid of the pokey stuff.
This is the Arizona Trail rainwater collector at Freeman Road Trailhead in Penalt County, where we are hoping to provide water for hikers, bikers, and equestrians who are traversing the trail.
Oh, this is going to be awesome.
We have a few Arizona Trail staff who are here. We have about a dozen volunteers today and more coming tomorrow.
I'm a volunteer. About two and a half years ago, I started looking online for different places to volunteer. Arizona Trail came up. I love the outdoors.
Well, team effort makes the dream, that's it, right?
And I figured the best place to go would be in the back country.
The idea here is that we're creating something that can be duplicatable, that we can share with other trail organizations or other communities in arid lands, so possibly Pacific Crest Trail, Continental Divide Trail, other trails in the Southwest where water is in issue.
Oh, it's going great. It's slow, methodical, getting everything lined up, working with the crew, working together with the team, and communication makes things go a lot easier.
This is a very dry segment of trail. We have about, about 30 miles in total, 15 miles either direction with not a lot of water. There are a few remote cattle tanks, which aren't the best to drink from, a few remote wildlife waterers, but nothing right on trail. And so we're close to Freeman Road Trailhead where our trail angels often will leave water. And so our hope is to reduce the amount of need for supplemental water on the trail to provide a year-round sustainable water source. 1,500 gallons of water. It's about a 24-foot diameter collector which collects water. And so we've done the math to know that this will fill two or three times per year and provide plenty of water. Rainwater, it's the cleanest water around, but there is the possibility that animals or critters get in it or near it or on top of it. It's possible that it can get contaminated, so hikers will need to treat the water before they drink it. Trail users are equipped to filter water. That's how that works on the Arizona Trail. And so they will either use a mechanical filter, a pump, or a filter that will screw to the top of a smart water bottle, or you can use tablets. So a lot of different ways to do that, and I think, you know, a quick stop by your outdoor store, there are lots of options available.
It is a very impressive piece of metal and it'd be awesome to see it filled up with water.
This actually was a grant specifically for providing water on one of the driest segments of the trail so that we, we know that on the Arizona National Seismic Trail, water is one of the bigger issues. I think the grant was for $35,000. That includes manufacturer, construction, materials, logistics, moving it on site, and assembly. This was working with an organization out of Glendale called Creed Built Designs. So Jeremy Creed, the owner of that company, hiked the Arizona Trail a few years ago, and so it's a way for him to give back as well.
It's a great organization. We have a bunch of great volunteers, and that's why it keeps coming back is because of the volunteers. coming back, is because of the volunteers.
This is really exciting, yeah, a year of planning and design and logistics and, you know, months just to get it out here, and we'll put it up in a day. It's exciting.
People come together out here in the middle of the desert to get it done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
And I just will remind the public that just about all of our districts have a food bank or two in them, and they all do water drives, and for $4 or $5, a case of water donation goes a long way, and it keeps. The purchasing report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Tiara Peterson, Purchasing Manager for Pinal County, and this is your purchasing report for May 3, 2023. First, the board has requested to approve the following purchase requests per Pinal County Procurement Code Section PC 1350, in the amount of $100,000, with supplier top flight for flight training for the aviation unit used by the department, the Sheriff's Department. CI in the amount of $120,575 for National Center for State Courts, for court consulting services used by Juvenile Court Services. Next, the board is requested to approve the following change orders per Pinal County Procurement Code PC Section PC 1-502, governing change orders that exceed minimum thresholds for PO 247413 for Synergy Petroleum LLC, in the change amount of $125,000, for a new total of $1,225,999 for diesel fuel used by Public Works and Fleet Services. Next, the board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases made, PO number 249319 for Line EV Systems U.S. Inc., in the amount of $239,287.20 for body cameras used by the Sheriff's Department. And lastly, subject to final budget adoption, the board is requested to pre-approve the following cooperative purchase that will be received and paid in fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Requisition 167165 for a combination of the following suppliers, Midway Chevrolet, Courtesy Chevrolet, Sands Motor Company, O'Reilly Chevrolet, via the State of Arizona Cooperative Contract for New Vehicles, new vehicle purchases, in the amount of $586,000 for 5 2024 Chevrolet Equinox SUVs, 5 2024 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 trucks, and 3 2024 Chevy Silverado 3500 trucks used by Fleet Services. And that concludes your purchasing division report for May 3, 2023.
Any questions or discussion? I don't see any, so I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the purchasing division report as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's unanimous. Which moves us to consent agenda. We have one request to pull item number L. Would anyone else like to pull any items? Anyone from the public?
Mr. Chairman, I request pulling consent to item O.
Okay. Anyone else? So I'll ask for a motion without L and O in it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent items A through Q minus L and O.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. And Natasha, item number L was pulled, requested by Valerie Luhon.
Yes, Chairman, that is correct.
Okay, so should she then address Y?
Yes.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, County Staff, and Members of the Public. This item has been pulled. I don't know if you all have been able to see the PowerPoint and kind of the staff packet that went along with it. If I may, if I can run through the PowerPoint, that just kind of highlights the event itself, and then we'll go into the stipulation as to why we are here, having the item pulled right now. So this is for Special Event 02322. It is the San Manuel Chili Cookoff. Do you mind going to the next page? Oh. Sorry. It's a second annual San Manuel Chili Cookoff. It's an annual one-day event that's put on by the San Manuel Revitalization Coalition. This kind of gives the details of where it's held, kind of who, the amount they're anticipating to serve, and it's scheduled for this Saturday for about five hours. The applicant is Jesse David, on behalf of the San Manuel Revitalization Coalition. Again, these are just some of the specs of the events, as well as some visuals of their first annual last year. It's pretty simple in that it's held at the open space in the airport, they throw up some tents, they have some seating for guests, they also host a lot of local vendors that kind of showcase their artistry, and also have some live music going on as well. Some things worth noting are that they are compliant with their portable restaurants, and also are able to allow for ADA complacency as well, with two restaurants being used as the pilot lounge. This here just kind of shows the intentional site layout, how it would all be delivered. We have the Chili Cookoff going on right in the center, seating with larger canopies, and then the vendors off to the side. The stipulations at the time of submission were as follows, so from the Office of Emergency Management, a completed and approved contingency plan, which I do have if the board wishes to see that, or if it's allowed to be passed around, that has been provided. From Risk Management, what is currently still stipulated is approved proof of permit required liquor liability for coverage from alcohol vendors by yesterday, or the event to be held without the liquor being consumed or sold. And so I would just like to go ahead, I feel it would be worthwhile to kind of read through the timeline regarding the proof of permit required liquor liability, just to kind of paint a picture of everyone that was involved in trying to support the applicant in obtaining this coverage. So, sorry, excuse me. So the applicant, on behalf of the San Manuel Revitalization Coalition, Jesse David, inquired about this event in late December. Susan Baker, the then-special events coordinator, provided Ms. David with a large event packet. It was returned rather timely, and Susan sent out the packet to county divisions that are usually involved in special events on January 17. These divisions include Aquafor Protection, Building Safety, Public Works, and Risk Management, just to name a few. Susan followed up specifically with Risk Management on January 24 via email to relay the certificate of insurance that the applicant provided. On January 26, Risk Management responded that the language used within the certificate would not suffice, and that proof of liquor liability would be required for vendors serving liquor. On February 1, Susan forwards this information to the applicant and tells the applicant to reach out directly, to reach out and work directly with Deb Sumdal of Risk Management. Susan sends a follow-up on March 1 to the applicant regarding liquor liability. On March 31, the applicant confirms that she has now reached out to Risk Management, providing an updated certificate of insurance. At the end of March, Special Events responsibilities transition over to me, having not heard anything for the updated certificate of insurance provided at the end of March, I emailed Risk Management on April 18, to which they responded that coverage does not comply. Considering the April 21 deadline for NOVUS, this item was stipulated to the wording provided by Ms. Deb Sumdal. Since then until the present, the applicant, Ms. David, and Risk Management have been in communication regarding the appropriate coverage. So as of today, as expressed by Risk Management, the coverage does not suffice. To kind of voice her concerns on this, the applicant did send me a statement to read into record, which I'm going to read now. My name is Jesse, and I am the Secretary and Event Coordinator for the San Manuel Revitalization Coalition. It is a nonprofit within San Manuel that is trying to bring the community back after a devastating closure of the mine back in 1999. So far, our coalition has brought in many different activities to help the community, helping to have people be able to grow their own food in the area, and trying to bring more tourism to help support our community economically. One way that we bring in tourism is by holding events that bring people to our wonderful community. Our biggest event of the year is the Chili Cookoff. This is our second year of doing the Chili Cookoff, and last year we had over 1,000 people, and it was a huge success. We were able to take the recommendations from the community members and put everything in place to make it a better year this year. One of the things that was requested was the alcohol being served, and as much as this task has been educational, it has definitely been worth the stress this portion has caused. For the San Manuel Revitalization Coalition Insurance, we have $3 million and $6 million coverage. When I was discussing things with Deb through email, it was a bit confusing, and I was assuming that I could have the coverage with liquor liability in order to cover the event. So according to State Farm Insurance, I have liquor liability in the amount that is required. I know we are not serving alcohol, but we are also observing and making sure the people are not overly drinking and staying in a good conduct to represent the community. I ended up getting a vendor that is out of Tucson to serve the alcohol. Their general insurance that they have in Tucson is $1 million of liquor liability and $2 million of general liability coverage. After numerous emails with Deb that were quite confusing at times, I thought I had it figured out. I was told, it was told to me that the people who were serving the alcohol needed to increase their insurance. I did send the emails from Deb stating what was needed to the liquor vendors. I told them that they needed to up their insurance in order to be able to run our event. The liquor vendor had been going through their broker to find the right insurance. They have found $3 million and $3 million insurance coverage. I'm not very knowledgeable in insurance, however, it is my understanding that the first $3 million is for each event. The second portion of it is for the year. So even though it is required to have the $3 million and $6 million coverage, this is only a once-a-year event, so the $6 million coverage is not necessary in this aspect. If I was using this company more than once a year, then it would definitely need to be required, from my understanding what the numbers mean, after discussing it with Deb. But there is no other events that I put on that have been requested to serve alcohol. After finding out that my liquor vendors could only get the $3 million, sorry, $3 million and $3 million, I did call Deb and asked her if I, if this would be accepting. And she told me that she cannot tell me whether or not the insurance is enough, because it's going to be up to the board. So I didn't have any extra time to see if there was another vendor or anything else, because to me, the $3 million for each event is enough when I'm only having one event with alcohol a year. I am also going to be including the documentation from the liquor vendors' broker to show that there was, that there was different quotes given to them, and that we tried to do our best to comply. The only difference in the insurance is that it's not $6 million per year for the incident, but the $3 million coverage for each event is still there. So my liquor vendors have the $3 million and the $3 million of extra coverage. They have $1 million in liquor liability and $2 million in general liability. Then, the San Manuel Revitalization Coalition has $3 million slash $6 million in liability for this event, that it also includes liquor liability in our own insurance. If you look at all the insurance that we have, this one event is covered by $9 million worth of insurances. Liquor liability insurance is $4 million total for one event. Then, SMRC has insured, has insurance that also includes liquor liability for $3 million, and the liquor vendor has $2 million worth of general liability. I also want to make it known that the State of Arizona has seen the amount of insurance that we have, and has approved the liquor permitting. I hope this yearly insurance decreases does not deter you from the approval of our event. I'm not very knowledgeable when it comes to insurance, but that part was what was explained to me by Deb. And being that it is not an event that serves alcohol more than once a year, I hope adjustments can be considered. If there is anything else I can do to try to make this event go on without a hitch, please let me know. I can do my best to get it done within the next two days that I have before the event. Thank you very much for your time and for listening to what I have to say, I appreciate everything you all do for our county, and keeping people safe to keep our communities growing. Signed, Jesse David, applicant. End of statement. So that is currently where we are at with the event, in that Risk Management has shown that the coverage is not sufficient enough for them to be able to serve alcohol. I'm not too sure if this now moves to an open discussion or what's next, but that's the end of my presentation portion.
So Natasha, we can discuss with the person, right, with these rules today?
Yes.
Yeah. So this is an event that's happened every year?
Correct. Well, this is their second year.
Second year.
Yes.
And last year it went off, no problems?
Correct.
And...
With no alcohol, though, last year.
Yeah. But events like this happen all over the country, and they're great for the community, and it's, as I said, one of their only fundraisers, so I don't see a problem with approving it, with doing what they can. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? If the alcohol is not sold at a fixed price, it's a donation, can they still serve it?
No, this would, that would still be providing alcohol. The same liability issues would be attached for our approval of the event, and if the board would like some further discussion about potential liability, we can do that in executive session, if you would like, and the reasons for requesting insurance coverage.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go into exec session.
Second.
You have a second.
All right, I have some more questions to ask in public, but we can do that after, okay, all in favor of going into executive session?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we will be in executive session. We have some information or some more explanation of why we're going to talk about what we're going to talk about.
I'm sorry, what was that?
So, yeah, anything you want to bring forward, or does the attorneys want to explain how this all came about and why we're looking at this so hard?
Yeah, I think I'd be comfortable deferring to the attorneys.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, these requirements have been published as part of county special event, large special event permits, they're in the application. They're developed in consultation with the county's insurance provider, the Arizona Insurance Pool, and so they are to protect the county from catastrophic liability that can happen as a result of alcohol being sold or consumed on county facilities. There is a stipulation that is part of the proposal for the board's action, that if the applicant can provide proof of the required insurance, previously, the stipulation had said, I think by today, if the board chose to give them a little bit more time, you could perhaps have the stipulation read till noon on Friday, May 5, to give them the ability to provide the coverage that is required by county special event permit requirements. If you have any questions?
Any questions? Looks like no.
Thank you.
Are any more discussion, or are we ready to possibly make a motion? I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we, hm, now I don't know what I want to move, that we, that we allow the San Manuel Revitalization Committee to, or wherever, to get approval by noon on May 5 for the, for the serving of alcohol.
Mr. Chairman?
I should do that one, right? Okay.
It would be an approval of the special event permit, with the condition that alcohol may be served if the applicant meets the requirements for the required insurance coverage by noon on Friday, May 5, and if they do not, that the event would happen without alcohol.
Actually, it's the vendors, which are likely...
The vendors, okay.
Can you just dub that into my motion? That would be, yeah. Make my lips move and say that, that'd be just fine. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
There we go.
That official enough.
Uh-oh, now we've got.
Vice Chairman McClure, if you can just state "so moved by," um, Kevin Costello, so that way I can go back and listen to the recording and re, and put that in the motion verbatim.
My motion that was "so moved by" County Attorney, or Assistant County Attorney, Kevin Costello.
Now, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes with that stipulation. Okay, we have item number O. Mr. Ravelas, can you explain?
Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, uh, consent item O is prefaced by what is moving this item whereby the school superintendent is required to provide school districts with sound fiscal management of local, state, and federal dollars. And in light of the serious allegations, two major, serious fiscal allegations regarding in-kind contributions to the Republican Party and regarding similarly allegedly illegal contributions by the Republican Party to nonpartent school district candidates, I think rather than requesting the board to reject and disapprove School Superintendent Jill Broussard's report, that we await to hear from our county attorney on these serious allegations, uh, that affect five different school districts and to give an opportunity to School Superintendent Broussard to update her report, I think it would be prudent to table this, uh, consent agenda so that, uh, all parties will have an opportunity to gather the facts and come to you with truthful reports rather than confusing and perhaps unlawful allegation admissions. That's the reason for my request that you table this until we hear from the county attorney and the county school superintendent regarding those two very serious allegations that occurred not just, uh, incidentally in one occasion, but over this period of eight years and totaling over a hundred thousand dollars, uh, in, in, uh, at a cursory glance of the funds involved. That's my request, Mr. Chairman.
Natasha, is this time-sensitive for the fiscal year? How long do you have to approve something like this?
Chairman, if I can refer to the, um, Deputy County Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not aware of a, uh, specific deadline requirement, uh, to have this item approved today, um, but I have not, uh, to be honest with the board, I have not looked into that, uh, issue.
And this wouldn't be the board doing an investigation, this is just approving another elected official's report?
That is correct. This is just approving the report that has been submitted to the board.
But in the, uh, effort to be open and transparent, uh, then perhaps we should give some time to, to resubmit a report with some explanations in it, or does it even, uh?
Mr. Chairman, simply continuing, uh, this item to the next scheduled meeting would give staff the opportunity to follow up. If additional information needs to be presented to the board, uh, then that could be done at that time, and then the board could take the action whether to approve the report or take some other action based on the additional information they receive.
Okay, thank you. Anybody, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I kinda get sick of the serious allegations they often turn to not. And is anyone here, Ms. Broussard isn't here, is she?
No, she's not.
Um, you know, this, I think this involved the Florence School, what, you know, aside from a reporting function, what, what does Ms. Broussard have to do with the management of, of the Florence Schools? To my knowledge, our school superintendent for the county doesn't manage the day-to-day operations of the Florence School District.
That's correct.
And if they made a mistake, you know, they're human, there were some, you know, at some point in time, um, it is alleged that they, that they're, the amount charged to the Democrat, or excuse me, the Republican was somewhat less than the Democrat, which will be fixed outside of this report. So, um, and then finally, Mr. Ravelas had mentioned illegal contributions by the Republican Party to candidates. Well, we don't deal with that here either. So I, I'm not in favor of, of entertaining this, and I think we should approve it.
Anyone else?
I agree with Supervisor Kavanaugh. I, uh, I, I, I'm not seeing where the report itself would reveal anything, and the investigations that are gonna go on, they, they should go on, obviously, but like your point is, is I just don't see where that, um, has any relevance to this item that we have right now before.
This is a year-end report, so we're asking her to redo the report just for some recent allegations, which sounds like it should be in next year's report because this is happening at the end of this year. So that's the way I'm looking at this, is this looks like it should be addressed in the future, and she should also be able to explain that this is not my responsibility, et cetera, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may clarify with the county attorney, who may or may not know, uh, Ms. Broussard can amend this year's report if required, if some investigation reveals an issue. Is that correct? And we can approve an amended report later on, a year from now, or the way government rolls, a year and a half from now?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I have not specifically looked at the requirements related to this report. Generally, reports can be amended if information comes to light that reflects on what is being reported, uh, but I have not looked at this specific report.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we approve item O as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's unanimous. So I will now recess the regular meeting and convene us into flood control. And is there a motion on the consent agenda, or if nobody wants to pull anything? I don't see anybody pulling anything. Is there a motion on the consent agenda for flood control?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve, uh, consent items, uh, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. And that concludes the flood meeting. We will go into public health. And would anyone like to pull anything from flood, from public health? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve consent items.
Mister?
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
I'd like to pull.
Okay.
On, on public health? On public health, okay.
Okay. All right, so that's the only, uh, item that's been pulled, so let, we can now discuss that. Could you explain why you'd like us to pull, pull that?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, Roberto Ravelas again, of Gold Canyon. Um, our, our school districts are really facing some very serious issues these days, including, uh, gender identification issues affecting a very small minority of our student population, but, uh, medical data that I've looked at indicates that one out of 4,500 births result in unsure, indeterminate, gender-affirming genitalia issues. It, it, it affects children clearly in a horrific way. School districts are confounded by how to proceed with the issue, uh, that is, keeps coming up at our local school board meetings, and so I would encourage our public health department to, uh, provide public, the public with information about this very serious but infinitesimally small number of, uh, gender-affirming, uh, issues. And so that's the only reason that I step forward because it's, it's, it's a serious problem facing our school districts and must be a horrific life-dealing decision for youngsters who are faced with this issue themselves. It's not an ideological, religious issue, but it's a human issue that is very consequential to all of society. So I would encourage our public health department to look into this because it is a practical issue facing our local, uh, school districts.
Okay. Natasha, what he just asked, I don't see in this motion, but I think what he kind of did there, and we don't ever offer call to the public for flood control or public health, so he kinda did a, uh, call to the public just wanting us to look at this in the future and to make the public health aware of it, is the way I read that. So he just wanted to raise awareness to this. Does everyone agree?
Agreed, because it's not in this item.
Yeah. So in the future, when we do call to the public, should that be on all of these agendas?
Yes, Chairman. Call to the public is for anything that's on the agenda, inclusive of the district agendas as well.
Okay. Oh, okay. All right, so we'll make a note of that, so any, any further discussion on, on this?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve consent item A, well, the consent items in the public health.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. We'll adjourn out of public health and back into our regular meeting. And we have a public hearing on discussion and disapproval of right-of-way agreement between Pinal County and Ubiquiti, Arizona. Megan.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Megan Viegas with the Public Works Department. Also in the audience representing Ubiquiti is, um, Chris Winman and Tanya Freese, right behind me, in case you have any questions for them. Per Statute, Arizona State Statute 11251, the county has authorized to regulate and manage the public right-of-ways within our jurisdiction. Therefore, Public Works is recommending approval of this right-of-way license agreement between Pinal County and Ubiquiti for use of our right-of-ways for installation of their facilities.
Any discussion or questions?
I just, what exec? I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Megan, how does this interact with ADOT right-of-way? I mean, I get a lot of questions, and sometimes I find out, well, we don't clean that because that's, that plugs to ADOT, or that's part ours, or we do one side of the road, they do the other side of the road. Is that, am I really reading that right?
Correct. We only grant in the county right-of-ways.
Only in the county right-of-way. It's for this agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'll determine that from some kind of map.
Yeah, any other jurisdiction or ADOT, they have to go to them for their approval.
And they have to go to ADOT for, if they request?
If it crosses there, yes.
Okay.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address this issue? Hearing's seen, and then I'll close the public hearing, and any more discussion among us? I'll ask for a motion.
Real quick, Supervisor, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that what we're talking about here is the utility faci, their utility company, is that what they're doing?
Correct. Telecommunications.
Okay. So some of our neighborhoods have had tremendous amount of complaints in some of our neighborhoods with some of the updates and things that's been taking place, and just want to make sure that we're aware of that, you guys are aware of that, and work with our staff as much as possible to help eliminate or even keep it to a minimal when it comes to this stuff. And so just want to make sure that's very clear, because we're getting a lot of complaints. I, I would imagine Supervising Clear as well is getting quite a few, so, thank you.
Now, are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 11 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Ten. Should be ten. Trying to get ahead of us.
Correction, Mr. Chairman.
I'll still second.
I move that we approve item number 10 as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 11 is public hearing discussion on approval of fiscal year '23 annual action plan funding with Heather.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Heather Patel with Office of Budget and Finance. The agenda item before you today is called our fiscal year '23 annual action plan, which is sort of our application to HUD for our annual funding that we receive through, um, the Office of Community and Planning, uh, through HUD, and that includes our CDBG and our home funds. Each year, we are required to submit this action plan that says what we're going to do with that year's funding. It has to comply with our five-year consolidated plan, which is covering 2019 to '23. We do also have to invite communities to join our program versus the state's program, and so we do have four communities that are part of our program, and that would be Eloy, Florence, Maricopa, and Mammoth. We have a citizen participation process that we go through, and it comes to this point today with the final action plan for your consideration. It is due to HUD on May 15th. For the fiscal year '23, we are expecting to receive a little over 1.8 million in CDBG and about 629,000 for home funds. In November, we held four public meetings throughout the county, and then we were before you, um, in February as a public hearing to obtain input from the public on projects, as well as to share with you the projects that were discussed during the November meetings. I'll go over each of the programs, just so you have some information about, um, what the proposed projects are. Our CDBG, or Community Development Block Grant Program, is intended to have projects that serve low and moderate income residents or areas, or address a slum and blight, which is usually by a redevelopment area, and can be, um, something to address an urgent need, which is usually like a flooding or something along that lines. CDBG is used for a variety of different projects, um, and, and so long as it beats one of those objectives that I just mentioned. This is just a list of all of our past projects that we've done since 2019, when we first started to receive the CDBG funds from HUD versus the state program. And these are the projects that our partnering communities have done since 2020, when they chose to participate in our program. What we're proposing this year is with the county's portion of the funding is to set aside some administrative costs for our staff, to continue with our housing rehabilitation program focusing on emergency repairs, which are smaller projects. We also would like to put some funding into Colonial Del Sol to do some sewer hookups. We are using ARPA funding. funding to install the main lines of the sewer system in Colonial Del Sol, and this will be a, a process to get individual homeowners hooked to the system. There will be an application process similar to what we do with housing rehab. And finally, to, in our 2022 funding, we had proposed to do some sidewalks in Randolph, and so we're just adding a little bit more money to that project. The cost, of course, for sidewalks is increasing. So, we're just wanting to put a little bit more money into that project. Our communities have proposed some projects. Eloy would like to do Crosswalk, Cross Main and Frontier, which is the main road that sort of goes parallel to the railroad tracks. Florence would like to do some ADA improvements to the Senior Center in Heritage Park. And Maricopa would like to do some road improvements, which includes sidewalks, curb, and gutter in their Heritage District, which is a redevelopment area. Mammoth did not request funding. This is just a list of other projects that were discussed during our public hearings. Ultimately, for the communities, it comes down to what project they choose, that their council chooses, and then what they submit as their application to us. And then our projects are selected based on, obviously, a need and what is currently being completed or addressed by the county. Our home program is specifically to provide safe, decent, and affordable housing to low and moderate income residents of the county. And we can do this through a variety of projects. We can build affordable housing. We can do our owner-occupied housing rehab program. We could do a down payment assistance program for people to purchase homes. And we can do a tenant-based rental assistance program to help people pay their rent. There are some requirements with home funds, is that we have to set aside 15% for a community housing development organization. At this time, we only have one. We are actually getting two more of them on board, so we have some variety coming up in future years. We are also required to provide match to the program, and we generally get this through our partnering organizations or our developers. They, they usually are the ones that end up providing that. This is the list of our past projects that we have completed or are in the process of doing. You'll note that the project in Casa Grande is with our Chodo, which is Chicanos Por la Calza, and we are funding them over multiple years, '20, '21, '22, and proposing '23, to finish up a rental construction project that's 176 rental units. So, what we are proposing for this year, again, is the Chodo set aside for the Chicanos Por la Calza project, and then a little bit more to round out the total amount that they needed. We also would like to fund our housing rehabilitation program, and finally, fund Habitat for Humanity for one single-family home construction. We have completed two projects with them already with previous year's funding. Just want to point out, is we do have some information on our website about how people could receive technical assistance in submitting an application, how our meetings are accessible, and if they have a concern that there is a grievance policy. And we also post our citizen participation plan, which outlines how it is that we involve the, the public in this process. A little bit on our timeline is, like I said, we had our public meetings in November. We were before you in February. And then, in May, is when we approve the action plan and submit it to HUD. Somewhere in the fall, August-ish, August to September, is when HUD provides the agreement with us to receive the funding, and then we subsequently execute an agreement with our subrecipients, which could be our communities, or in this case, like Habitat for Humanity, we would execute agreements with them, and then the projects can proceed. And that is all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, the info may have been there. So, this only covers two of the five districts. How do you arrive at where?
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Sertie. The projects, I'm going to go back to CDBG. We, for CDB, oh, sorry, wrong one, I apologize, this one. For CDBG, we have seen, and we have funded our housing rehab program for many years. And, and we have a list that is about, I think we're a little less than 80 people on our waiting list. Quite a few of them are emergency repair projects that are just an air conditioning unit, or just one thing that they need. And so, that's why we're proposing the emergency repair portion. And that goes throughout the entire county. And then, of course, with our home funds, that is the full housing rehab, where we do much more in-depth stuff with that, with those homes. Colonial Del Sol is a project that, under the fiscal year 2019, we funded the design and engineering of the lines. And so, subsequently, oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm not asking you to explain all of these. I'm just wondering, why is this not more all-encompassing? Do, do the individual communities need to be aware that these funds can be there to help them, is what I'm trying to get?
Okay. As far as our partnering communities?
Yeah.
Okay. Every three years, we are supposed to reach out to all of our communities, and we ask them, do you want to join our program or stay with the state's program? It is their choice to then decide if they want to partner with us. We will be going out probably towards the end of this year, beginning of next year, to talk to the communities again about their next three-year cycle. And, and so, that's their, their decision whether they want to participate with our program or not.
Okay. Mr. Kavanaugh?
I have a question. Do you know what it is? So, I haven't kept track. How does this impact or affect Ms. Rita Wooton, this project?
Thank you, Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh. This program doesn't impact her at all. Her project was completed.
Good, okay.
Yeah. So, this is just for future.
Thank you.
Anyone else? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 12 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. This is item number 11.
Oh, I got it wrong. Item number 11. Sorry about that. Somebody second 11 for me, would you?
Second 11.
I would mo, I would second item number 11.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Item number 12, discussion approval of the donation of file cabinets for a dollar.
Rusty ones?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Angie Woods, Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. As you're all aware, my office is tasked with either repurposing, disposing of, salvaging those items in the county that are no longer being utilized by departments. In this case, we have two large file cabinets that we would like to, we would like, well, I guess it's the Mammoth Fire District would like to utilize those. They're willing to pay us a dollar for those two file cabinets. And this item would require a unanimous vote of the board to then give those items to the Mammoth Fire District for a dollar.
Same stuff, different day.
Yeah.
I, I move that we approve item 12 as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Discussion and approval, disapproval, the request to create new job classifications. Mary Ellen.
Chairman Sertie, members of the board, Mary Ellen Shepard, Deputy County Manager. Today, we are seeking your approval to create two new classifications for our countywide payroll processing functions. The proposed classifications are designed to more accurately reflect the duties and responsibilities associated with this function and the market data which supports establishing the appropriate pay grade. These roles have been prioritized for consideration, given critical recruitment and retention challenges we have faced. The new classifications are payroll specialists, which replaces the generic accountant and accountant senior classifications currently used. This change will allow us to recruit for those experienced in the unique discipline of payroll processing. We're also seeking to create a supervisor, so we have someone with the expertise and is able to supervise this function consistent with federal, state law, regulations, and our policies. Any questions of any of the board members?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. How, how many people do we have in the payroll bubble?
Currently, I believe there are three, and she's here to correct me if my understanding's inaccurate.
She's, she's nodding behind your back, so, okay. And, and just, I'd curious, I mean, well, clarification. So, this is just, we're going from an accounting function to a payroll function, so we're just clarifying, specifying, or being more clear about our function of operation.
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor McLeary, absolutely. Instead of being in a position where we're recruiting for accountants to fulfill a payroll function, this allows us to recruit for those with the expertise and the desire to work in that specific role.
Thank you.
Any more questions or discussion? Then I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 13 as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Discussion for future topics. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think from the public comments today, there seems to be a couple of items out there we might have to address, though maybe not for a decision, but for discussion. It seems like there's still some concern about our, our arrangements with Lucid, and then this issue on the paper ballots, and how that actually dovetails into the whole voting process, and what that really means. So, nothing urgent, but maybe in the, in the near future, some discussion on those two.
Mr. Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know we're coming up on our budget process and budgeting process. I think it'd be helpful that if we had a, a robust work session in regards to the budgeting, but also auditing each of the, you know, our elections department, or not, our elected officials, you know, what the process is, maybe our auditing department can talk a little bit about that as well. Because they, they do audit it, and I, I think it's important that the public knows that we do do auditing internally to, to assist with our, our elected officials. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I think I don't need a motion to reconvene into exec, because we are already in there, so we're going to be in exec. Good session. During the meeting.